All right. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the special Samuel County Board of Supervisors meeting for October 21st. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance by Supervisor Curran.
Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with all righteousness.
All right. Entertain a motion to approve acknowledged certificate of posting. First, we have a second.
Second.
All's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. So that would take us to our first item, which is discuss provide direction to CIO, County Council, with respect to next steps to review policies, procedures, processes of the Auditor's Office, which led to the fraudulent payment of $696,602 on October 15th, and to inform the Board of reforms that must be made to ensure further fraud, waste, and abuse. And we have County Council Gregory Priamos leading things off.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Board of Supervisors. What is before you today is to discuss and provide direction to the county administrative officer and myself with respect to next steps or actions to review the policies, procedures, and processes of the Auditor's Office, which led to the fraudulent payment of nearly $700,000 in county funds on October 15th, 2025, and to inform the Board of Supervisors of reforms that must be made to ensure against any further fraud, waste, and abuse. And later on in my presentation, I will provide you with the options as well as my recommendation. First, I'd like to provide a timeline of events as we know them for the morning of Wednesday, October 15th, and Thursday, October 16th.
Do we have an issue? What's that? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Proceed when you're ready. Great.
So on Wednesday, October 15th, the Treasurer contacted the county administrative office to advise the county administrative officer that the Treasurer was alerted by Wells Fargo Bank regarding a suspicious ACH or electronic money transfer that was paid to Tykert Construction in the amount of $682,000. Payment was initiated by the county's Resource Management Agency, or RMA, and paid by the Auditor's Office. Wells Fargo contacted the Treasurer's Office for verification, but the payment had already been made to Truist Bank. The Treasurer then directed Wells Fargo Bank to begin recovering the funds. Later in the day, the Treasurer sent an email to the county administrative officer advising that the fraudulent payment was for $696,602.2. Wells Fargo had already begun the process required to file a fraud claim with the FBI and was attempting to recover the money. The Treasurer had already begun advising the Sheriff's Department to begin their criminal investigation. The next day, Thursday morning, October 16th, at 8:51 a.m., the Auditor sent an email to the Board of Supervisors explaining the fraudulent transaction. And that email says that instead of calling the vendor number in the county's ERP vendor database, the staffer called the number on the vendor change request form that was submitted from RMA. This regrettable breakdown in our fraud prevention procedures will be addressed and our fraud prevention procedures will be hardened to prevent future fraud. So I'd like to put up the Auditor's email to the Board. And I'd like to read from that email because it provides additional context for what happened. Honorable Board of Supervisors, this is from our Auditor to the members of the Board of Supervisors and the county administrative officer and the county treasurer. Yesterday I was informed by the county treasurer, Melinda Casillas, that her office was alerted by the county's bank, Wells Fargo Bank, that a possible fraudulent ACH vendor payment had been made. The fraud was confirmed after the Assistant Treasurer asked a member of the RMA to call the intended vendor to inquire if they had made the vendor change request and received their payment in the amount of $696,602.2. The Assistant Treasurer immediately issued a request to reverse the ACH payment with Wells Fargo. The status of that reversal request is pending. My understanding that the Treasurer would be contacting the FBI to report the fraud. The payment was intended to be made to Tykert Construction. The fraud was initiated with a vendor change request form that was submitted to my office from the Resource Management Agency. A member of my staff received the completed and signed form, and according to our internal procedures, called the vendor to verify that the change was requested. Instead of calling the vendor number in the county's ERP vendor database, the staffer called the number on the vendor change request form that was submitted from the RMA. This regrettable breakdown in our fraud prevention procedures will be addressed and our fraud prevention procedures will be hardened to prevent future fraud. Sincerely, Joe Paul Gonzalez, Auditor Controller. Which then leads me back to the report before you today. This is now the second time in two years that the county has been the victim of fraud involving significant sums of taxpayers' money. As you will recall, on September 9th, the Board unanimously authorized the issuance of a request for proposals for accounting firms to provide forensic auditing services to investigate how the county's internal financial processes, procedures, and controls failed to detect embezzlement, to conduct an assessment of the Auditor's internal controls, and to recommend policy reforms for the county. You may recall that the Auditor personally appeared before you at your meeting of September 9th and argued against the issuance of the RFP and considered it a waste of taxpayers' money. You may recall that the prior case involved the financial loss of over $360,000 due to fraudulent and embezzlement activities involving two employees of the county library. It is highly unlikely, if not certain, that the county will never recover those taxpayer monies. Unfortunately, the fraud continued undetected for 16 months until a third-party vendor called the county administrative office asking who they needed to speak to in order to deal with the library's delinquent account. The embezzlement was never detected by the county Auditor's Office, which authorized the payments, and the fraud would likely have continued undetected had it not been for the notice from the third-party vendor. We are talking about nearly $23,000 a month in purchases from Amazon. The request for proposals was issued on October 10th, and the responses are due on October 31st. It is important to note that the Auditor is a separately elected official and does not report to the Board of Supervisors. The Board of Supervisors does not have the authority to control directly or indirectly the manner in which the Auditor performs his duties or to exercise management over the Auditor. The Board has no authority to discipline or remove the Auditor. That power is entrusted to the Boarders through the recall process or by the judicial removal process initiated by a grand jury accusation. And that brings me to the available options for the Board to determine how and in what manner the county's internal controls may be reviewed and may be enhanced in order to prevent any further loss of taxpayer money. I have listed three for you. There are actually four, but I could not, as your counsel, put down on paper the fourth option. And the fourth option is to take no action. I'm sorry, but I could not put that down on paper. The first option is to report the matter to the California State Controller's Office and request that they immediately open an investigation and conduct an independent audit of the Auditor's Office. California Government Code Section 12422.5 subdivision E as in Edward specifically states that the Controller may audit any local agency for purposes of determining whether the agency's internal controls are adequate to detect and prevent financial errors and fraud. The second option would be to issue another request for proposals for a forensic audit of the Auditor's Office. The third option would be to bring an action in the San Benito County Superior Court seeking a court order compelling the Auditor to properly perform the duties of his office under state law. Which now brings me to my recommendation. And I believe that option one, that is to report the matter to the California State Controller's Office and to request that they immediately open an investigation and conduct an independent audit of the Auditor's Office pursuant to the State Controller's authority under Government Code Section 12422.5E. There have now been two failures by the Auditor's Office within two years, resulting in the loss of over $350,000 in taxpayers' money and the potential loss of another $697,000, bringing the total potential loss to $1.1 million. Since the State Controller is statutorily responsible for determining whether the Auditor's internal controls are adequate to detect and prevent financial errors and fraud, and for determining why they were not being followed by the Auditor in this instance, my best advice to you is to recommend option one. I have taken the liberty of writing a letter for the Board to all sign, to send to the Controller, and I'm happy to read it for the Board if you wish. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything further from County Council aside from that piece? If there's a wish for that from the Board or from admin? Melinda, did you want to provide a, we got an update this morning before we get to Joe Paul. Any further context on where we're at with this situation and anything else you'd like to add based on what our County Council stated?
Good morning. Yeah, so unfortunately, this morning, when I took a look at the bank statement, it showed that the amount that we have been credited back for this ACH fraudulent claim was actually, and we had received a credit back for it, was actually reversed this morning. And so the money was deducted from our account unfortunately this morning. I did hear back from the bank just a little while ago that there was a little twist in the account that when they reached out to the bank, the account had already been closed. So they were unable to draw the funds back. However, they are still working on this issue and that they will let us know by the end of the day any further investigation that they have on this particular incident.
Thank you. Did you have anything further? CIO has something, and then if Melinda had anything?
Just a point of clarifications. When you said that the accounting was closed, you mean the account, whoever pulled up the funding at the beginning, that was closed?
Yes, the account that the money went to was closed. So the Wells Fargo was having an issue drawing the money back.
Okay, thank you.
It's still pending, and they're still working on it.
Thank you.
Anything further? No? Melinda? Joe Paul?
I can confirm the information that the Treasurer just relayed yesterday. You know, we've been in communication at the Auditor's Office with the county's bank fraud unit, and they, you know, they informed us yesterday that we didn't have that level of detail. What they confirmed was the account had been frozen, and that's why the preliminary credit had been reversed. So, well, that's the status of that. Very bad news. I, you know, I'm here to answer any questions. I just wanted to point out too that, you know, the responsibility to prevent fraud occurs at every level. You know, it begins with really with cognizance by every employee to prevent fraud. Our purchasing policy requires that the purchasing officer implement the purchasing policy and follow that policy, that the assistant purchasing officers, who are the department heads, must also follow that policy. And the policy, you know, requires that every department do its due diligence to ensure that, ensure that the payments are legitimate payments. And so when the Auditor's Office gets a claim for payment, there is, there is an action, that is, an action taken by the department to request that a payment be made on behalf of the department. And that information is everything related to the vendor, you know, to the payment invoice, all the support documentation, the contract is provided to the Auditor's Office to substantiate the validity of that payment. And in our office, we verify that information. As what was read, there was a breakdown in our office with a vendor change request. The vendor change request came from, came from that department, and it was, you know, signed by the fraudster, but submitted to the department and then submitted to the Auditor's Office as proof that, you know, that there was a vendor ACH request for a change. And the, you know, that department does not have a fiscal officer at this time. It's, you know, they've been operating without a fiscal officer, and in the budget, that position was removed. So that kind of verification, vendor change verification, would have been done by that fiscal officer initially. So that would have been the first level of fraud prevention that would have, that would have occurred there. Then, of course, the vendor change request form comes to my office, and we do our due diligence. And as I have been totally transparent with the Board of what occurred, I'm, you know, letting the Board know that I get it, that that responsibility falls on me. Whatever happens in the office, that's mine. That's mine, and I own it. So this, you know, the ACH change was made, and the fraud filters, in addition to my office, the county pays for basically fraud prevention measures with the Wells Fargo Bank. They have ACH fraud filters. Their fraud filter noticed that it was a brand-new account, and that initiated their response. But unfortunately, their response was too slow. And, and so, you know, timing, as you know, timing is everything. And at that time, the, when the bank contacted the Treasurer to verify the fraud, they worked as expeditiously as possible and, you know, requested the reversal of the ACH payment. And now we know, you know, what the status of that is. It's very important that as we, you know, talk about this, that we talk about this in ways that we find a critical balance between transparency and security and confidentiality. Because just mentioning the vendor's name, you know, violates those, you know, those kind of, you know, recommendations of not, not providing that kind of information publicly because especially during the investigation. With regard to the recommendations that have been made, I am in agreement with the Board that something that needs to be done. However, I'm in agreement with item number two. If it's expressed as, not as a forensic audit, because forensic audits are about coming up with numbers. What happened? What was the true cost? Really, what's needed is agreed-upon procedures that the, that the Board should be requesting if you want to have specific, specific review and reporting on the internal controls of not only the Auditor's Office, but it needs to be of the county. Because as I mentioned, not all of, you know, the fraud is, you know, lands on the Auditor's Office. It's incumbent on every employee in the county to prevent fraud. So I'm in agreement with that, and I would also say- And I'm, I would also say that if, pending the outcome of that report to the board, at that time, it makes sense to, to pursue option number one, the recommendation from the county council, to ask the state comptroller's office to investigate and to do their own audit. Because it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to, you know, do so at this time, because it's a bit of an overreach, because we don't know, well, I do. But, you know, whatever the report of the, you know, CPA firm doing the agreed-upon procedures, whatever that outcome is, that's what should trigger additional measures, including a request to the state comptroller's office. And the same goes with option number three. Option number three is, you know, to go across the street and order the, and have an order made that I, you know, do my job well. This is a tough job. This is really a tough job preventing fraud amongst the myriad of other functions that the auditor's controller does. I know that each of you must know someone or some business that has been, where fraud has been perpetrated and has been successful. It's everywhere. It's all the time. We, we deal with, we deal with, you know, fraud attempts quite frequently. This one got past us. And I have a... Well, at this time, I don't have further comment. If you have questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, I think it would be wise to try to hash out some of the details. We want to go to questions. If anyone in particular wants to start. I don't know if, I know there's still some. You don't have to start, Suozheng Kuro, you can start with Velazquez.
No, it's okay. If you're looking at me, so I'm...
I'm looking both ways. I'm just looking for Suozheng Velazquez.
Go for it.
Thank you. I actually like to ask this Casillas some questions. If you can come up so I can... Just, your office got the notification first, correct, from the bank?
I'm sorry, what?
Your office got the notification first from the bank?
We, we did get a notification, yes.
Thank you. So what I want to know is for the public to know the process before it gets to you. By the time it gets to you, a payment is, has been okayed, and you issue the payment? Is that how this works? Maybe it's take us through the steps.
Okay. We also have Xena from Wells Fargo on Zoom, and she might be able to answer what happens at the bank prior to us receiving an email from them.
Yeah, no, I'm looking for the process on our side before it even gets to the bank. So the department issues...
Pardon me?
The department issues a, the request for a payment? Is that how it works? It gets to the auditor's office, and then it gets to you? What's the process?
Basically, we, the auditor's office issues all the payments. And then Wells Fargo notified us that it appeared to be a fraudulent payment. And so we started looking into why they thought this would be fraudulent. We don't issue any payments to the bank. That's already happened.
That's already happened through the auditor's office?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just that we get notification. We got a notification that it appeared to be fraudulent. And then we started investigating why it might be fraudulent.
So I guess what I'm getting to here is, if the bank had not notified you about this transaction, nobody would have known?
No.
It would have been paid? We wouldn't know about it until a year, two years, maybe never?
Until, I guess, T-Car called asking for their payment.
Okay.
They wouldn't necessarily call our office for that payment. They probably would have called RMA looking for that payment.
So this is sort of as in the Amazon. We didn't know until Amazon came knocking on the door saying, hey...
That's my understanding.
What's going on here? We didn't know about this until the bank called and said, hey, you might have an issue here. In other words, we didn't know. And the reason I want to make sure that's clear because I heard some discussions out there about this office discovered this fraud and jumped right in to stop it and gain the money back. And that wasn't from your, your office. I know you guys thankfully alerted everybody right away. But that, to me, seemed kind of strange that it was a bank that caught it. And what I heard a little earlier was almost as if we depended on the bank to catch these things for, for the county. Have you seen something like this before? Have we had any instances like this in the past?
We've actually had some fraudulent activity. There's been a couple of issue fraudulent account, payments from the school districts. And then we started the fraud process of getting that money back into our account. We were successful in getting that back from whoever the payment was actually sent to. We've had one other fraudulent payment, basically from a county employee. Somebody called and wanted to change the bank account, and it wasn't actually from the county employee. And I think we got most of that payment back. I'm not sure we got it all back. But it does happen. Last week at a conference, there was actually a session where Wells Fargo gave a presentation of how a lot of this fraud happens. And on the panel, there were also a couple of treasurers from like L.A. County and Santa Barbara County and what procedures that they use to, once they're alerted, how they go about handling that issue.
Right, so this is nothing new. This is happening.
It happens, yes.
We're aware, and this is why we have procedures in place to make sure we don't become a victim of this.
Yes.
And again, I think I heard earlier, we're relying on the bank to catch it. And if the bank hadn't caught it, we wouldn't even be here talking about this because we would not even know at this point.
Not, probably not that soon, no.
Okay.
No. But it is very prevalent, this fraud, people trying to steal money from bank accounts and redirect payments. It's very, unfortunately, very common. And AI is making it even more difficult to catch these prior to that happening.
Well, I understand.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for your, your answer. So let me go back to the auditor. Because as you know, I've been frustrated with the finances of this county since I started this year. I've been very vocal about that. The procedures, the lack of information getting to the board, and the processes to make sure this county taxpayers are protected. And I've been very clear on my stance on that with you in the past. We just heard, had the bank not called this out, nobody here would even know about this. And there'd be a group somewhere celebrating $700,000 in their bank account, probably on some beach somewhere. You put out a press release talking about how you caught this or your, your department caught something or whatever it was, and it was, we got the money back. I'm going to go back to my frustrations, starting with being on the budget committee, the audit committee. Back in March, April, I had major concerns about the information being presented to the board, our financial information not being accurate. And I made that very clear about, we need accurate information here at the board level to make sound financial decisions for this county. And through that time, month after month after month, we could not get accurate information. It got worse as time went on. Our audit committee, same issues. Turns out, several years back, information not being very clear to us. As we move forward, talking about the embezzlement, I made that clear. We need more safeguards so this doesn't happen again. And I was very concerned when your response was, we don't need an audit, we know what happened, it's not going to happen again. Those are red flags for me. That moment, it was clear to me, I can only talk from me, my perspective, that this was going to happen again. Because the attitude is, we have this covered, we know what we're doing, don't worry about it. Well, I've been worried since I first got into that budget committee, knowing our numbers were not accurate and nobody had the answers to it. No matter how hard we tried to get answers, we didn't get them. Now we're in a situation where I'm more concerned that it didn't happen once. This has probably happened multiple times, and we just don't know about it yet. Now, there was a point I asked for forensic audit. I guess I should have made that clear. That should have been county-wide, because I have major concerns about what's going on. And quite frankly, I don't have confidence in your leadership in that department. And I think something should be done about it. You're an elected official. Personally, I think you should resign. This is going to become a bigger issue than what we know right now. I can almost guarantee it. I'm very frustrated by where we had to get to to get to this point. I do want action taken by the state, if not other agencies, because it is our responsibility. At the end, what's going to happen is like, well, the county doesn't even know what they're doing. We know what we're doing. The problem is, we're not following the procedures. This really should have been, I don't want to say an easy catch, but it should have been caught. Well, you're talking about checks of 600, $700,000. This should have been caught. And we should have had more clarity on those procedures to make sure something like this wouldn't happen. Again, this is me speaking. I'm speaking for my fellow members. But I've been frustrated from, again, the beginning of the year. You've known that, but to make sure that's clear. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I chime in on that?
Go ahead.
Just before we get the response, just because I, I, I know where you're going with some of your questions, but I'm going to dive a little deeper, Supervisor Velazquez. Because I know, once I ask these questions, you're going to chime in from your background. And, and hopefully that will... But before you respond, I, I really like to have RMA come up. And I'm assuming that this was a road project? So I'd like to ask some questions of Mr. Lu before we respond to this.
What questions can I answer for you, Supervisor?
Knowing my background, you know I'm going to get into the weeds here a little bit, being a former project engineer in construction. So my first question is, this vendor, I'm not going to say names of vendors, but this vendor that fraudulently made this change of company name or business or whatever. When you receive those, was this in the middle of a contract that was already executed by the county?
It was. And to clarify, they did not ask for a change of name. They just asked for a change of payment methodology.
So they, so it's in the same company, but they changed where the payment was going?
They asked to switch from a paper payment to in the ACH payment, which is automated clearance payment.
Okay, that, that is, that answers a lot of questions. Because I was going with it was a different even vendor change, because I keep hearing it was a vendor change. And that was going to take me down the road of, you know, did we, you know, lien releases and progress payments? And I was going to go down a whole rabbit hole there. So it's a vendor change on how they receive their payment, and there was already payments in the pipeline?
Correct. We had made paper payments, and they reached out to us and said, we'd like the last payment to be an electronic payment.
So just to clarify, if this had been, because I want to educate myself a little here. If this had been a company change, where the vendor was changing from one contractor... Contractors absorb construction companies all the time. And there's a protocol that you go through when contractors absorb construction companies. You first have to define, you know, where the scope stops and starts with each one of those contractors. You have to know where the lien releases are going to start and stop with each one of them and ensure that the scope is stopped and started. So I wanted to just clarify, because I was going down that path, that this was a company change, not just a change in how they receive their payment. So the intended contractor is the actual intended contractor in name.
In name.
In name, okay. And then they did have a contract with the county that was executed either, I'm assuming because of the amount, it was executed by the Board of Supervisors. And there was a procurement process followed, ensuring that those were encumbered funds.
Correct.
Okay. I, I, I thought this was going to go down a change of actual company. So, because I, I'm trying to read between the lines on the press releases. I'm not fully aware of everything that's going on. So since that happened, if a change in contractor had happened, you would have gone through a lot more steps at the department head level than just a form changing how they receive their payment.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. I appreciate that. Sorry, sorry for interrupting. I just wanted to add to that.
Chair?
I think Joe Paul wanted to respond.
Yes, if I could, you know, briefly respond. With concerning the comments that Supervisor Velazquez said that concerning the fraud that was perpetrated against the library. That was a fraud, not external, but internal. That fraud is widely, widely known, and the case has been fully, you know, you know, all the, you know, all the legal actions have been finalized. Where two employees colluded and management was absent. Department head took no responsibility for that fraud. And the fraud, you know, pretty much, they followed, followed the purchasing procedures to the T. And we, we were very much taken aback by the level of fraud, because those invoices were fraudulently created. And those numbers were real invoices, the numbers that they used. And very, very hard to detect if we didn't have access to the Amazon account to be able to verify independently. That's something that we do now. We verify, we verify all Amazon purchases independently of all departments, because we could see exactly what is being purchased. With regard to the phone call, yes, a phone call was made by Amazon. It was, you know, received here at the admin office. The call was forwarded up to my office. It was a complaint that 28 invoices...
It was a complaint that 28 invoices had not been paid for the year 2022. And in fact, we had eight invoices that we felt we had paid. And so we had an invoice payment dispute with Amazon. And we asked them to provide copies of those invoices. And their response was, they could not provide them to our office, because we were not the designated person for that business account. It was only at the library. So they referred us to the library to find those invoices. You know, that's why, you know, that kind of fraud, very, you know, anytime there's collusion, very difficult to find, to detect. Especially, you know, that, you know, in that case, the use of professional software was used to be able to, you know, copy those invoice numbers and all the information associated with with that invoice so that, and then replacing it with a legitimate, legitimate-looking purchase on those invoices. You know, I'd be remiss in not telling you that that is, that kind of fraud is very, very, very hard to detect. With regard to the inaccurate information that, you know, unreliable information that Supervisor Velazquez has mentioned, well, you know, the county's ERP system, the New World ERP system, is the system of record of the county. And that system is very accurate. It's historical information. It is not budget information. My office does not really, does not produce the budget on behalf of the county. That is produced by the administrative office, as you know. So that kind of information is, you know, projections, estimates, that, we don't deal with that in the Auditor's Office. We deal with actual transactions that have occurred in the past, and we report those transactions. And annually, we have an annual audit by external auditor who reviews statistical sampling of all transactions. They review the minutes of the board to see what the board's actions had, you know, what actions the board made. And is the Auditor's Office following those actions? These are the, you know, these are the things that we go through in the Auditor's Office to ensure that, you know, financial system is, what's contained in the financial system is accurate. And so annually, we get an annual full audit, and a single audit is conducted. That's in addition to the ACFOR that is presented. And annually, that ACFOR is sent to the GFOA. And we have been the recipient of Award of Financial Excellence in reporting, in fairly reporting the, you know, the financial condition of the county through the ACFOR. That happens annually. The reason why is we're following, we're following all of the pronouncements associated with the GASB, the Governmental County Standards Board. So I don't want the public to have this impression that the county has bad financial information. We have very good financial information. And our external auditors attest to that in their opinion letter, every year.
Thank you. Supervisor Zinger?
Yeah, thank you. I have, sorry about that. Yeah, a couple of questions. First, I actually have a question for Steve, if that's all right. So just so I understand, the fraud perpetrators, I guess, were aware that there was payments going out to the construction company? There were some happening, and there were some more in the pipeline? And so then they reach out and say, hey, could you actually put this last payment somewhere else? Is that, does that happen ever? Is that common? Because that sounds odd to me. Does that, is that a common practice that a vendor would switch to the, I guess, the destination of where they're receiving their funds?
Yeah, I wouldn't say it's common, but it does happen some percentage of the time. Folks start out, we send them checks, and then they want payment faster. So they say, can we please switch to electronic payments?
Okay. And so how did the, I guess, the fraud perpetrators add some information that the county was about to be paying TICER? Or how does that work?
So they sent an email from the company saying, we would like our payment to be switched to electronic. And how do we do that? And we went through several emails back and forth. And they had to fill out some forms. And that switches them to the Automated Clearinghouse System when they submit those forms. And that was the process essentially.
Okay. Got it. I was just trying to figure that out. Thank you. So then my other question, maybe for a treasurer, maybe for the bank? I'm not sure. Just to understand where we are now. So if I understand, the money went to the account. The bank's trying to get it back, but they closed the account. They turned that money into Bitcoin, whatever they did. And they ran off, and they closed the account. So is there any, are we actually going to get this money back? Is that likely? Is that unlikely? Because it doesn't seem like that would be likely if the money's gone. I don't know how the bank's going to get that back.
Yeah. So the bank is working to get the money, see what they can do to get the money back. And then we've also worked with the Sheriff's Office to file a claim with the FBI. And they'll be working on that and also to try to get the money back for us. In fact, this morning, I got an email from the detective on that case saying that they would still be pursuing to try to get the money returned to us.
Okay. So regarding the FBI, maybe, because I don't see how, I just don't see how the bank would be able to ascertain that money if it's gone. So I...
They're still working on it, trying to obtain that for us.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks. And then regarding the question regarding the breakdown of the prevention. So it seems like when you get a, if I get like a text or a call, and they say, hey, this is your bank. Something happened to your account. All this money has moved around. Call this number, verify, and deal with it. I never called the number, because I would just, if I had an actual concern, I would just look up the bank's phone number and call directly, because obviously, if that was a fake message, if that was a fraud, that would use a fake number, and that would be plain writing, and they'd ask for my information and so forth. So I guess that seems like, it seems like a sort of intuitive process to me. What exactly, how did that fall apart? How did that not happen? Is it, do we know if there's, this is a common practice? That they checked is just what's on the email?
The person who was in charge of doing the vendor change verifications and approvals. So the vendor changes come from the departments. Those are the departments who are saying, hey, you know, we talked to our vendor, and, you know, these are the changes that they're requesting. As I mentioned to you in the email and what was read, is that that vendor change verification, one of the items of the verification is that we asked for a voided check. That the staffer, the junior staffer that ended up doing the verification, received a voided check. You know, as one proof. The senior staffer that normally would have done that left, so the junior staffer took on those responsibilities, was trained, but, you know, missed a very important logical step, which is, you call the vendor verification, you call to the vendor to verify, hey, did you really make this request to go from a check to an ACH? That call, instead of calling the database that we have in our ERP system for the vendors? Well, that person called the number on this form.
So, okay, I understand that. And so my question would be, do we know if that is what that particular person or other staff members in your office have been doing consistently? Do we have any idea? I mean, if your car gets broken into when you leave it unlocked, the odds are that someone has tried before, and you just left it one time. So is this something that's been, is this just the one time that it was a fraud? But in the times that it's not, they're still calling what's on the, they're not calling the proper number?
Well, the senior member was always calling the database vendors' numbers. If there was vendors, you know, these are not a common occurrence. They're not, you know, it's very uncommon to get these vendor change requests. But that senior member would call the vendor database. And that should have been, that should have been the process that was followed. But it wasn't in this case.
Okay. Thanks.
Supervisor Setello?
Sorry, excuse me. I've got a couple of different questions, and they're going to kind of be all over the place. One of the things that was mentioned earlier was that this was initiated at RMA and that they currently do not have a fiscal position, I believe it was. And that that position has been eliminated due to the budget cuts.
That's right.
Why would we eliminate a position dealing with fiscal?
That's not a question for me. That's a question for the CAO.
Well, but if I understand, when we went through our budget process, the department heads are the ones that came up with what positions. The CAO did not make those recommendations. So this would have been a recommendation coming out of that department. Am I understanding that correctly?
No, I'm going to correct that record. So what we did, every position that was available, and somebody will leave, we eliminate that position. That was the vacancy. It becomes a vacancy position, and automatically, we're deleting those. However, that person was only two months there. And there have been other situations that happened before with other people sitting at that table, in that position. So I took it after positions available as vacancy position. And I worked with both the RMA and the auditor. They made a case that they selected the wrong person to manage that project, that position. They made desolation, and they want to get rid of that person. So I'm just putting on the record, I eliminated the position, the vacancy, because they're going to have to figure out how to do it now. Because they have been doing, they had not been working with that individual.
Okay. Okay.
It doesn't mean that we cannot put it back, but they have other plans.
Okay.
In relation to that question, that position is very critical for the department. At this time, and as I had advised the Audit Committee, that, you know, there are many transactions that have not been completed for the fiscal year 24, '25. Large transactions that have not been posted. And they haven't been posted because they don't have the staff in order to do so. And the elimination of that position makes it pretty much, I don't know how those transactions are going to get made. You know, these are transactions coming from the department. Only people who are familiar in the department know which projects they're working on, which, you know, what the status of those projects are and how they should be charged. They have a cost accounting program over there called CAMs. They, you know, they need to be able to charge off those costs and make sure that those costs are being, you know, you know, journaled so that we receive them up at the Auditor's Office. At this time, you know, never have we been so behind in the financial reporting of the RMA. It is in a, you know, it's a skeleton of what it used to be. And there's just no way that we're going to be able to get our ACFOR completed to be able to, you know, report our annual report. As I mentioned to the Audit Committee, we're going to be, end up like the city of Hollister, where they're three years behind in producing an ACFOR. And they're not having to, they don't have up-to-date financial information. And I have advised the CAO that there is the former retired member that held that position who has now exceeded the six-month requirement for KALPERS before they can be rehired. And I've recommended that they rehire this person, because that person has pretty much the only, the only hope that we have at this time to make sure that we can close the books for 24, '25 and to be able to deal with the road audit that will follow that.
Thank you.
Can I clarify that situation, please?
Yeah.
The HR department will jump into the conversation. As the comments that he made regarding, this is the first time being so behind. I just want our HR department, who was here at that time, to clarify his comments.
Okay. Thank you.
So in the RMA department, regarding their fiscal management, their fiscal team there, there has been issues with staffing for a while, the current staff that they had back in 2023, when the auditor had told me last summer in 2024 that they had to do guestimates in closing some of the books. So they've had issues, obviously, 2023. Last summer, it was brought to my attention that because of some staffing as well, that between the finance officer or the fiscal officer and the administrative services manager, they had issues last summer again with having to do guestimates. So staffing the fiscal unit within RMA has been an issue for several years, not just recent.
So my point is to say that this is the first time that they're so behind? That is false, because they have to do estimates in the last fiscal year. And to bring back that individual that was unable to complete the work, I will be totally against it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair and Madam?
I stand by my statement.
Supervisor.
Oh, go ahead.
I want to just, because it's all relevant to this topic and your question. And maybe I have my facts incorrect, but this has been going on for a long time, because we, in the Recorder's Office, had to loan an employee to RMA to update CAMs years ago, because they were not fulfilling those obligations. And they were there for over four months? Almost six months to be able to get back up to speed?
You are correct.
So this is not something new. And it should be, you know, something that's highlighted, because we can, with these failures, which I learned only because of having to loan an employee from Recorder's Office, these failures will jeopardize grant funding, future state grant funding, federal funding. It will cripple us in the future. My only question, I think Supervisor Setello kind of hit it, is whether it was a... whether it was a position let go because the person that was replacing a prior person maybe wasn't up to speed on everything is better than not having anybody at all. I'm struggling on the bringing back retirees because this is a problem that is coming back to the board as another issue. We have historically, our succession planning has been in this county, bring back retirees. And that does not solve the problem. And so I just wanted to add that comment because this is not new.
I agree with you. It really is a temporary measure. It's only to be able to close the fiscal year 2425 year. That's the only purpose here. And yes, it's true that when that person was previously employed full time, was unable to complete all the work. So we did have to use estimates. But they were not guest estimates, estimates. So we had, you know, we had a basis for those estimates that were acceptable to our external auditor.
Supervisor Setello?
Thank you. Does somebody else have something?
Is it related to the follow-up or just I want to allow Supervisor Setello to keep?
You have a follow-up question?
Go ahead Supervisor Setello.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Setello?
Yes.
So the reason also for the elimination of the position is because it seems that the description of that position was inadequate for the work that is expected. Our goal is to create another position that requires to have an accounting degree. The problem that we're having, we're hiring people without the education that is needed to work in that department. We have been using other people with other bachelor's degrees, bless their heart, but we need an accountant. And until we have an accountant, we will continue having those issues. An accountant with experience, by the way.
Thank you. I mean, I think this is something that we're going to need to figure out. We can't just go on forever with, well, the position's been eliminated, so let's just figure it out. We've got to do something. So hopefully, I know that's not exactly what we're talking about today, but this is something that is going to be very important. We're going to need to figure this position out. Do we know if any other counties have been hit? You know, I know like we're all part, we're part of CSAC, the California State Association of Counties. We're part of RCRC. Do we have any idea if any other counties have been hit? I would guess that with this type of sophistication, San Bernito County cannot be the only county that they're targeting. Do we know, like, have we put out feelers to find out? You know, like with, you know, statewide auditors or statewide treasurers, hey, we just had this incident happen, be on the lookout. Has anybody else experienced anything like that? Do we know if we have any of that?
Yes. We put out an email to the regional auditors, which were part of a subgroup of the State Association of County Auditors. You know, one county, all these, all the counties that responded, larger than us, responded that because of this type of situation where fraud has occurred as associated with ACH, they offloaded that risk to a vendor that provides that service and provides a warranty with that service. So, you know, that's something that we've already started looking into, you know, looking into having that service provided. And, you know, our, our hope is that we would come back to the, to the board after looking at three different vendors and providing the board with a recommendation on ACH vendor. Because we want to, we would really want to offload that risk.
Okay. But we don't know that any have been hit recently with a construction type of?
We know that the service is working because prior to that, you know, we did get confirmation that they work it. And, you know, we're a small county. They're a very large county, they have a lot of transactions, a lot of vendors. So the opportunity for this kind of thing to happen is great. And so they didn't want that risk. They, they moved on to it.
I think sometimes because we are small, we become a target, right? Because we don't have some of the safeguards in place that some of the larger counties can afford and can have the manpower, et cetera, et cetera. So in some ways, we're even more vulnerable because we are small.
And believe it or not, one of the sources of fraud is the Public Record Act. One of the things that the Public Record Act requires is that if, if, if the clerk receives a request to, hey, they want, they want a list of all the vendors in the county. They want a list of payments that have been made. That's public information. There's very little that we have in the auditor's office that is not public information.
Seems like those would be red flags though, that we would alert somebody that, hey, there's somebody fishing for all of our vendors or all of the payments that have been made or. I don't know if this is an appropriate question or not, so stop me if it's not. Could it potentially, given how sensitive the information was and some of the information that they knew, current vendors, in the middle of a contract, et cetera, et cetera? Could it potentially have been somebody internal? I know the example was given with the library that this is very different because this is external and that was internal. Are we confident that this is 100% external and not internal?
Well, you know, the sheriff's conducting the investigation. Really, that's, that's where that question should be directed to and to the FBI. The FBI has also been notified to conduct their investigation. So I would say, you know, that question needs to be answered later.
Sure. And if it's not appropriate, please, I just feel like we should probably be looking absolutely everywhere. And so if it's not appropriate, please just let me know that you can't answer that.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Thank you Supervisor for your question. I would say at this point, since we're just getting started, anything's possible. We don't have a lot of deep understanding of exactly what happened yet. And just for, I know that there's been a lot of chatter, at least in the public, about the FBI being involved. White collar crime like this is the FBI's forte. It doesn't mean we can do it, but there are no banks in the county. There are banks in the municipalities. This building that we sit in sits in the city of Hollister. So because it is a county issue and we want to make sure we're getting on top of it and not disregarding it, what this really is, the FBI's lead investigation, because it is a wire transfer, it's probably international, it's something that's way out of our wheelhouse or our ability to pursue other countries and work with these banks that are external from this county. But in order for the FBI to do these investigations, they need a partner, a local partner, because there could be state charges pending. There could be something local that we find out happened. There could be something nefarious internal in the county or there may be actors here locally and it may need to be tried by our district attorney in part. So for that reason, we are part of the FBI's investigation. They have to have local buy-in. But really, this case will be driven by the Federal Bureau of Investigation just because it is white collar cybercrime, wire transfer type activity.
Okay, thank you. Joe Paul, I know earlier you mentioned the vendor, the call vendor verification, I think is what it was called. Is there anything else that we could have done differently that you kind of know, like, hey, this would have ensured that this didn't happen? Was there, I mean, or is that the only thing that you kind of feel that, hey, every other box was checked? That was the only thing that wasn't done?
Well, that definitely was a major box to be checked. And so, you know, as, as I mentioned in my press release, that we're going to be, as associated with your question there, we're going to change that vendor change request process so that there's, you know, we strengthen those controls and we have cross-department verification. One of the things that, that we want to do is that on that vendor change request form, I want the, I would like to have the department head, I, you know, I want to put a checkbox on this form that says, we have verified with the vendor and we have called the, you know, the vendors using our, you know, their internal information, not anything on a vendor change request form. And I want to have the signature of the, of the department head requesting this.
So I haven't seen that form ever before. I mean, obviously, I'm not in operations or anything like that. So, but I'm just curious, who are the signers on that form currently? Just the employee doing it and then whoever's processing it, say at like the auditor's office? Would those be the two signatures on that form?
No.
No.
The form, the certification is by the vendor.
So the vendor is the only person that signs this form?
Right, they're the ones who fill it out. And, you know, they, they fill out the, you know, the information. And, you know, the department verifies that the information is correct and they forward it to us.
And is that like a county form that we have? Obviously, I know it's going to say San Bernito County, but is that a form that we have created here internally? Or is that something that's more of like a statewide kind of form that kind of everybody uses?
No, we created internally and we try to keep this confidential.
Okay.
Because we don't want, we don't want it out there to, you know, for potential fraudsters to know, hey, what our process is.
Okay, okay, thank you. Do we have, this, maybe this is directed to county council. We, you gave us, there's a total of four options, three are recommended. And there's been a lot of, or there's been some talk today around option one. And I think the auditor mentioned he would like to see option two. And so I'm just curious, do you have an idea of the cost difference between option one versus option two?
Option two would require the expenditure of county funds to pay for the separate forensic audit. I believe that the State Controller's Office will bear the cost of their audit of the county's internal controls.
Okay, so one would essentially be free for us and the other we'd have to pay for?
Correct.
And do you have any idea what something like that might cost for the forensic audit of the auditor's office? I would guess countywide?
Countywide, I think we're talking at least six figures.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you, Joe Paul. I know it's a tough job that you've got in preventing fraud. It's getting more and more sophisticated every single day and becoming more prevalent and aggressive. And I'm sorry that we are all going through this, but I think in my position, I'm accountable to our community and to the public. And so it's something we've got to address, as I know you are as well, being an elected, right? So anyways, those are my comments, thank you.
And if, again, if I could reiterate to the board that the board really wants an engagement for agreed-upon procedures, not a forensic audit. That's kind of a catchphrase out there to, that, you know, in this situation, that is not, it may lead to a forensic audit, depending upon the results of the ERP.
I think the way that I'm looking at it is that we identify where our weaknesses are, right? And kind of where, where our vulnerabilities are. And getting that information, maybe I'm thinking about this backwards, but in doing this audit, it really starts to establish where our weaknesses are, where our vulnerabilities are, right? Then we can go ahead and begin to formulate kind of those best practices and those procedures to ensure that we never do this again. So maybe it's one of those, you know, the chicken or the egg kind of thing comes first. But I think that's how I'm looking at it, right? Is that the forensic audit would help establish where some of the weaknesses are so that we can take kind of that corrective action and make sure that we set a really solid foundation to ensure it never happens again.
And me and my office are, you know, 100% in agreement that that's the process that the county should, should take. If, you know, if the board wants to take action, this is very appropriate. And we will be as cooperative as we can because we know that that information is something that will be helpful to our department and to all county departments. And we, we appreciate that, that help.
Okay, thank you very much. Couple of questions. You know, we've had a lot of question marks with our budget, frankly, in the last, you know, half a year to a year. I'm still wondering and curious about the anomalies that we've seen in some of the numbers. What is the potential that we've had other fraudulent payments made? And what is the plan to look back and to make sure that this is an isolated instance outside of the library embezzlement?
Because we haven't had vendors call up and say, hey, we haven't received our payment, it's likely that other fraud has not been perpetrated because, or has not been successful, I mean. Perpetrated, yes, not successful. So as far as, you know, that's one of the things too that our external auditor does is that they review all transactions and they verify with, with confirmations that they send out to ensure that, that the, you know, that these payments are legitimate, payments. What we have strengthened immediately and what we have done is all vendors in the ERP system that have not had a payment within the last year, we have inactivated those. And so if, if the departments want to, you know, if they end up doing business, you know, with one of those vendors, they would have to request that we activate that vendor again so that we can, you know, effectuate a payment.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just very concerned that this is not potentially a one-time instance and that that needs to be part of whatever we do going forward is taking a serious look back and scrutinizing other payments, large or small, to really, to really take a hard look at this. Because I'm hearing that, you know, with the library, we wouldn't have caught it if Amazon hadn't flagged it. And I'm hearing, you know, with this instance, we wouldn't have caught it for quite a while if Wells Fargo hadn't flagged it. So my gut tells me that our red alarm should be on a high level as far as looking back at historical payment, payments made and to ensure that, that these aren't the only instances because?
I believe that the RFP that was issued by, by this board would be, you know, would be taking a look at those types of transactions to gain a, an assurance that, that, that the controls, that the current controls that are in place are reliable.
But the current controls that are in place weren't followed and therefore were out $700,000 at this point. That's, so am I confident that the controls have necessarily been followed in recent history? At this point, I am not. And that's why I think it's really vital for us to, to really take a hard look. These are taxpayer dollars, this is no small matter, whether it's $700,000, $70,000 or $7,000. That's why we're holding this meeting today because this is a critical, critical matter that we're dealing with here. And we can't allow this to happen again. And we do have a responsibility to look back and make sure that it hasn't happened already in other instances. So I would just strongly recommend whatever we do today, whether it's outside scrutiny or the state that, or whether it's through the library embezzlement that we do make sure to follow up and cover our tracks. Because right now, at this moment, I'm very, very concerned about whether this may have happened in other instances.
And if it's desire of the board to expand the scope of the request for the, for audit instead of, you know, agreed-upon procedures, we, you know, my office stands, you know, at ready to. at ready to cooperate with them.
If Wells Fargo is still on, I'd like to know the likelihood if they can put it into words of recovering the $697,000. Are we talking about zero likelihood, basically?
What, what my office, in speaking with the, the fraud unit with Wells Fargo, they informed me that it was going to take up to 90 days to come to a resolution on the account.
But based on what we heard this morning, that the money was reversed back, the account was closed. In this sort of situation, generally speaking, do you ever recover the money is, is my question for Wells Fargo?
Hi. This is Xena Monroe from Wells Fargo Bank. I am the relationship manager that is assigned to the county's accounts. And there has been cases with other government entities where we were able to retrieve the funds, depending on how the funds were taken out of the other account at the other bank, at the, the initial bank that the ACH, not wire, it was a ACH transaction went into. So depending on how the fraudster was able to take that money out, it could be a possibility that yes, they closed that account. But if those funds were transferred or like you said, wired to another account that our fraud team will, you know, investigate, then it's possible. So that's why the fraud case is still open and not closed yet because it is still possible. And then I wanted to also just clarify one thing that I was hearing. The fraud occurred due to a, it looks like what is a business email compromise. So the vendor's email was hacked and that's how they were able to send that documentation over to the county. So the vendors that you work with, their email was hacked. So the county thought that they were getting an email from their vendor and it was actually a fraudster. So, you know, it's not that the county's accounts were being watched. It's that the vendor's accounts had already been compromised and hacked. And so they sat and they watched and they watched. And this is what these fraudsters do. They sit, they'll, they'll be in your accounts, we've seen for months at a time and they'll wait until like there's an opening where this was maybe a final payment, or they'll wait until someone goes on vacation. Maybe it's a city manager or something of that nature. And they'll say, you know, we've seen instances where they will say, hey, you know, you get an email from what you think is a city manager telling a finance director, hey, wire these funds to this account. We're going to be acquiring something. And, you know, if it's a astute finance director, she knows her city manager's on vacation and wouldn't send that. So, you know, those, these are some of the things that, that we see on the bank side of things. Just wanted to give you an example.
Likelihood or low likelihood that we'll recover the money?
I don't say it's low. I just say it's, it's still a possibility because again, even though that account was closed, we don't yet know, our fraud team hasn't provided us that information, but we don't know how that money was moved from one account to another.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much. And then we're hearing that the perpetrator requested the change of payment methodology from paper to electronic for the last payment. And just, you know, me not being an auditor, I would just say still on the list of recommendations, I certainly would suggest that that should be considered as a list of red flags, that if somebody's coming in, making that sort of request at the last moment, that there should be some extra protocols that are put in place to really hone in on whether that's a credible transaction request or not. And then I'm, you know, I'm very concerned about the fraud. Obviously the embezzlement, again, I've already stated, we're talking about a million dollars that we know of in taxpayer money. And, you know, it is, and I, and I respect that you're, you know, you're taking responsibility for it, but I'm also hearing sort of it's, you know, also on the departments, you know, that the departments didn't follow procedures. It's kind of the first thing that I heard. And, you know, it's the most important role of the auditor to prevent theft of taxpayers' money. It is, it's in the job description and it's the last line of defense and it's supposed to be, you know, we're supposed to have credible, credible practices and protocols in place. So we've had these two instances now. And yes, other departments are involved in the process, but it is the auditor comptroller's primary responsibility to stop this sort of fraudulent activity and that should be made clear. You know, the immediate response on, on Friday after we, the county put out a press release, just trying to be transparent, was that your office put out a press release, almost a contrasting sort of press release, which, which I was concerned about frankly. And just as far as just being in the name of transparency. And that press release, in the middle of all this, the, the tone of it was basically to praise your entire office, to essentially praise yourself for catching this very unfortunate mistake of approving a fraudulent payment. We've had a chance to hear the, the record and to hear the facts and the facts don't line up with the narrative that I saw in that press release. And I, you know, I didn't get into this job to play politics. I got into this job because I recognized that we needed to be more transparent in government. We represent the people. We, we represent, we are protectors of taxpayers' money. And I would have liked to have seen just simply taking responsibility for this and telling the public what you're going to do going forward instead of praising your office and praising yourself in a way that really was not appropriate. And this is the second time this has happened. In fact, after the library embezzlement occurred, you put out messaging that, that you were responsible for catching the embezzlement. And there was an article in Benito Link, if I may, just real quickly, quote, "It is our job to verify", and I want to, keeping everything in mind that we've talked about today, being a small community and all these things. This is your quote, "It is our job to verify, verify every claim that comes into this office. We audit every transaction. We're still small enough that we can do that. And that is how we discovered irregularities in the purchases made by the library." And in fact, Amazon discovered those irregularities.
They did not.
And so I'm just concerned that, you know, not taking full responsibility for this, that we're not going to take it as seriously as we need to, that your office is not going to take it as seriously as is needed going forward. And I, I'm very concerned about that just based on the reaction from these two very significant instances. And as for the policy suggestion to have department heads sign off, that we just heard when you held up the piece of paper, that they sign off and call the vendor listed number, this is again diluting and deflecting responsibility. And what I would like to see, the most important policy change is to make sure that the auditor's office, whether it's you or designate, signs that same form, that you called that number because that is your job and your office's job to stop fraud from happening.
And, and I agree with that. And that's, that's something that we were going to, I didn't want to share that publicly because that's one of the, you know, that's one of the steps that would be required that I don't want, that I want to keep as confidential.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'm really sorry.
Yep.
I interrupted two supervisors when I spoke. I haven't actually asked my questions.
Okay. I'll finish up real quick then. Sorry about that. So Joe Paul Gonzalez recommending number two with regard to, but with regard to the embezzlement, again, you argued against having an independent auditor. And now you're arguing for an independent auditor, but you don't want the state auditor's office examining this. I'm going to fall back on the county council's recommendation to, to support bringing, to support requesting the state auditor comptroller's office come in and take a closer look. Supervisor Curl?
Okay. Thank you. And I apologize for jumping in when supervisors were talking, but it was like, I wanted to just make sure that I was complimenting your question, not interrupting them. First of all, I want to thank the treasurer's office and the assistant treasurer for all the work that you've done. And I want to thank Wells Fargo for being here. I did ask for that. I was hopeful that this was going to be a big thank you for helping recover the money. Hopefully that will still happen, but I do know how much work and effort you've put in to working with Wells Fargo on that. So I just want to recognize that. And, and Joe Paul, I have a, a couple of comments to some of the things that have been said today. Number one, department heads process invoices or claims. Those claims go through an internal system and then go to the auditor's office for approval. There is no other process. It goes from the department to the auditor's office. Do I still have that correct?
Yeah, but there's, there are levels of, of, there's entry level, there's the, you know, somebody enters, enters the claim, right?
Oh yeah. So in the department level, there's an entry person. Then there's a department had approval person or designate. And then it comes to the auditor's office. And I believe there's another process. So there's layers. I, I didn't want to go into the specifics because trying to keep vague as much as possible. I completely agree. Whatever is going to be done in the future, when it comes to internal controls, needs to not be publicly discussed out here. But at the same time, the name of the vendor was clearly in an email that could be a public records request. So even emails internally to department, board members or administration in order to ensure that we're not disclosing companies, I would make sure that, that we, we kind of put that into our little procedure hat of conversation. But I wanted to make sure it was very clear that department, it goes from department to auditor. It doesn't go through administration. There's nothing that's going through another part of the county at this time. When we talk about core responsibilities of the auditor's office, ensuring financial records and transactions for the county, that's going to the not estimate, but the estimates from RMA in order to close the books. We, we really need to get a handle on the fact that we aren't closing books properly. We've identified that from this fiscal year. So I really feel that that's an area that in our, whatever our recommendation ends up being, that needs to be an area that is identified and looked at. But accounting and financial services, these are all under the auditor's core responsibilities. Provide accounting, budgeting and financial services to the board of supervisors, county departments and special districts. This is not a he said, she said. This is a teamwork. When we do the budget, it's teamwork. If there are errors in the budget that are seen by the auditor's office, I would assume that your office would come forward and tell us and warn us of decisions that we may make that could be bad on the county. So I think we've identified in this last budget year that we have some bad practices of approving unbalanced budgets. How that all continued to happen, I'm not sure, but these are areas that I'm very concerned about. And then the internal audits, performing internal audits on county departments to ensure compliance with department, with county policy. I think our roles and responsibilities by department and by position need to really be looked at in whatever we're auditing or, or however we call it. When it comes to the forensic versus policies and procedures being followed, my concern is about what, what accounts have had misuse? Where have transfers occurred that shouldn't have occurred? Where have we seen issues in fund balances? It has nothing to do with what's happened today, but I think I have bigger concerns than just where we are on this one incident. The other thing is in the ACFIR, the outside auditor, and I'm, I'm going to apologize. I, I'm not going to pronounce her name. Edie Bailey? Is that right? Idi?
I, I Bailey.
Ida Bailey. Okay. I knew I was going to butcher that. In their letter, and, and I thought I had this report and I, I looked everywhere for it over the weekend. Unfortunately, we're in the process of doing some moving, so I couldn't locate it. But in the, the ACFIR, it says, "Other reporting required by government auditing standards. In accordance with government auditing standards, we also issue", this is Ida Bailey, "we also issued a report dated December 30th of 2024 on our consideration of county's internal controls over financial reporting and on the tests of its compliance with certain provisions of law, regulations, contracts and grant agreements and other matters. The purpose of this report is solely to describe the scope of testing of internal controls over financial reporting and compliance. And the result of that test and are not to provide an opinion on efficiency, efficiencies of the county's internal controls over financial reporting or compliance. That report is an integral part of the audit performed in accordance with the government auditing standards in considering the county's internal controls over financial reporting and compliance." I looked everywhere on the web for this report. I looked everywhere in my emails for this report. I know I was handed a copy because I asked for it when we sat down six months ago. And unfortunately, it was paper and I can't find it. I'd like that also to be known that the outside auditors are looking at our internal controls and potentially making recommendations, but it's not attached to anything that's on the public documents. And so I know there's a confidentiality issue about internal controls, but that kind of conversation I think needs to be discussed at administration, county council, auditor and the board level to be able to ensure that our internal controls are meeting the standards. In some information that's happened with bidding the, the hall of records and bidding the library, we know that in RFP processes, we know in some of these things, we have not had good scopes in our contracts. There are things that we know we're not doing. We're not encumbering our funds to our budgets. We are not showing any committed costs for long-term projects in our ACFIR. There are things that I think we could be doing better. And I don't know how to fix this except for by ensuring that we have recommendations brought forward to the board by experts. I am not an expert in this area. I don't claim to be an expert in this area. I have to report, like supervisor Sotelo said, to the constituents that I serve. And I'm in a very, very different role right now than I was previously. And this is a very hard role for me because of my history. Thank you for what you've done to identify and come forward and ensure that we address this. But we can't fix this by doing the things the way we used to or the way it's always been. And I will also state, our administration has uncovered this in a short period of time. The things that are coming forward that we were not aware of before are becoming very apparent now. Departments have not been given enough information and guidance and training on ensuring that they understand their roles in ensuring, preventing a fraud. My goal in my decision-making here is strictly to bring back policies that ensure that contracts are being very clearly scrutinized. They're in one location that we, anytime we have a change in vendor, anytime we have a change in, in, especially if you have a company absorb another company, which I understand has happened in the election world, that Dominion Voting Systems has been absorbed by another company, we should be asking for all kinds of information before we do any change in payment. And that is internal controls that I just am not confident at this time are fully there and that the training is fully there for the staff. And I, I take ownership of that as a supervisor and I need to ensure as a board that we focus on this, not just what, this is not just one issue with an auditor's office. This is an internal control problem that is countywide. And I'd love a copy of that December 30th, 2024 report and any other reports that are showing where our internal controls are being challenged. and any other reports that are showing where our internal controls are being challenged. And I think that's all I have.
Great. Do you have further, Supervisor Velazquez?
Yeah, I do. I want to close my statement by--
And we are going to go to public comment and have further deliberation as well?
I want to make sure we're focused on the issue. I heard conversations about department didn't do this, department didn't do that. We became aware of issues with departments this year. As we went through the budget, we recognized several departments were not reporting financial information correctly. And everyone was made aware of the situation. I want to go back when I first mentioned, you put out a press release. You kind of had a shocked look on your face. I want to help remind you what your press release said, because I think it's important. Part of your release said, "This complete recovery is a result of the immediate, aggressive and coordinated actions led by the Auditor's Controller's Office in a partnership with the County Treasurer's Office and county's banking institution. These efforts were crucial in detecting, reporting and successfully freezing and reversing the fraudulent transaction immediately after it was identified. I commend my entire team, County Treasurer and her staff for the rapid response and the persistence required to trace and secure the reversal of funds." Said County Controller Auditor, Joe Paul Gonzalez. Our primary goal is the preservation of public funds, and we are relieved to have achieved that goal. Have we achieved that goal?
As we all heard today, the County Treasurer informed us all that the notice that she gave to all of us--
Answers no.
That we had received it, you know, has been reversed. So--
We haven't achieved the goal.
So that, you know, that statement with the new facts, you know, has changed.
Okay. Again, I've been, became concerned about the county finances early in the year when I started looking at the financial information. And I made that clear several times publicly in budget hearings and the Audit Committee. I became really concerned, I'll make this clear again, when we talked about doing an audit concerning the library funds being embezzled. And the response being, "We have this taken care of here internally and it's not going to be an issue." That day told me we were going to face this day. It's no surprise to me. And I'm concerned I'm hearing the same rhetoric coming out of, well, it's a department head or this person. No, it's a structure. And your, my colleague pointed out something very important. What is that structure? How are we following that structure to make sure it doesn't happen? Not after the fact, but before the fact. Because now we have to let the public know we're down 1.1 million. And that's just not fair. It's not right. And to give the same answers and give a press release that it's all good, it's not. And we, as a board, as a public, deserve better answers. So we don't keep experiencing this over and over.
Does the board want to take a, be in a break before public comment or go forward with public comment?
I need to get out of here as, I need to get out of here as fast as possible.
Okay, public comment?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And in chambers, we'll start with Rob.
I have so much, I have so much to say. It's unbelievable. So number one reason for the forensic audit is after hearing everything that I've heard, and I know I'm reversing what I've said before, is it's, I'll give you other examples of how it could happen again or why it might be larger. It could have occurred before, but then it was covered up that it occurred. So vendor didn't get paid because we sent it to the wrong vendor. So, oh my gosh, this is so embarrassing. I'm just going to pay it because it will go underneath the radar. That's one way it could occur. The second way it could occur is through collusion. You know, a department head, and I'm not saying that occurred, you know, creates a vendor that bills the county, gets paid. And we would never know about it because it's, again, under the radar, especially given with what came out during the budget process. County Council's recommendations, one through three, I think he left off a couple on. Number four, no more ACH, right? That, that would solve this immediate problem because that is harder to recover than a check. Number five, no more Amazon. Look, I buy from Amazon for my company and, and yeah, it's, and it's really confusing. They don't have real accountability and stuff like that. And they're not the most friendly to, you know, business customers. They're a great company, don't get me wrong, but it's a very complicated thing. So I also get very angry when the County Treasurer tells us this morning that the credit was reversed, but the county auditor said, well, he actually knew that yesterday. I want to know why, why that was just coming out now. If he knew it yesterday, it seems like he should have known. And by the way, I do want to credit the county with having this meeting and putting out press releases that, about this horrific action. So the biggest thing that I was going to say originally, oh, I'm sorry. The reason I agree with 100% with what Ignacio, Supervisor Velazquez says is it's one thing that it occurred, but the finger pointing immediately is horrible. But more importantly, he, his spouse, his wife is out there blaming our new county executive for it occurring. I'm sorry, but it's just too much. I am positive that CAO warrants is not responsible for this in any way, shape or form. But when you have the county auditor, the elected official in the middle of this, and then you have his wife out there on social media--
You can wrap up briefly as much as you can.
Okay. You know, blaming others. This is right out of a Hollywood film and it's right out of, by the way, Bell, California. So I suggest that you do at least all three. The State Controller's Office, the forensic audit countywide, because you are going to find more. As a CFO for over 30 years, I can tell you where there's smoke, there's fire. So thank you.
I have no other public comment.
All right. We'll bring it back to the board. Who would like to start on the recommendations going forward? We have three recommendations in front of us. Supervisor Velazquez, who would like to go?
We'd go with the Attorney's Recommendation. I personally feel we need a forensic audit throughout the county. I think there is a lot more that will be uncovered, just a matter of time, looking through this. I don't believe these are isolated incidents. The tracks are there. All the fingerprints are there. We got issues here. And we're going to have to go deep, but I'm willing to start with this first phase as recommended.
Thank you. Supervisor Sotelo?
I'm just, I've got kind of a question. So I know we currently have an RFP that is, we're currently is out for bid right now or we're requesting proposals now for a forensic audit of the library, the Auditor's Office regarding the library embezzlement. Is there any way that we could potentially, I mean, are we, we're still moving forward with that? Yes. Would it be a lot more work to do it kind of countywide?
Well, I think the first step at this point is obviously for the board to decide which option you're going to select. If you were to select sending a letter to the State Controller, asking the State Controller to come in and conduct an audit of the Auditor's internal controls to detect and prevent fraud, then I think we then await the State Controller's decision. If the State Controller decides to immediately investigate and to conduct that audit, then we are going to need to discuss with the State Controller whether or not, and to what extent she wishes to move in first and for us to delay any secondary audit.
Okay.
So I think that would be the first steps that we would undertake. And we would need to understand exactly the nature and scope of the State Controller's actions. And then we would have to report back to the board to decide what would be the board's next steps.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I have this correct. So if we go with option one and we send this letter from the board, then the current RFP that we have out there currently right now would essentially be kind of put on pause until the State Controller responds?
Well, I would intend to continue to receive them.
Okay.
I would intend to continue to go through the evaluation process.
Okay.
And then to decide who are the top forensic accounting firms that we may wish to enter into a contract with.
Okay.
And to begin to prepare to bring that contract back to the board.
Okay.
Concurrently, we would be then speaking with the State Controller's Office. So these would be operating on dual tracks. Because I don't believe that we should delay or lose any time in this process. That's my best advice to the board.
Okay, thank you. I think I understand that. How likely is it that if we send this letter that we get a response from the State Controller's Office and they take action?
Well, I have the letter. I'll be happy to pass that out now for you to review it. But I would hope that, given the severity of the situation, that we would get some immediate follow-up from the State Controller's Office.
Okay. Okay, thank you so much. The CAO?
I would highly recommend to proceed with the letter. And the reason why is because we are in a difficult financial situation. And it would help a lot if the state takes over an audit. If they decide not to, then we'll have to go through the second option. But I will look for the first option based on our financial situation.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm comfortable moving forward with option one. Thank you.
Supervisor Zenger?
Yeah, no, I was just saying I'm comfortable, I'm good with the County Council's original recommendation, option one, reaching out to the State Controller.
I concur as well. My only, the only lingering question aside from, you know, I think we would still potentially look at doing an outside audit, it sounds like, is how do we incorporate looking at the past and ensuring that, you know, feeling confident that this, this is not a one or two-time instance that we're dealing with?
Mr. Chair, I have indicated within the letter that the board is in fact concerned that there may have been prior instances of which the board is unaware. And so part of the request is for the State Controller to determine whether or not that is in fact the case.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything further? Supervisors entertain a motion?
Make a motion.
Yeah, go ahead.
You approve option one?
Option one?
Yes, sir.
It's a first or a second?
Second.
All's in favor, roll call, please.
Supervisor Cosmiki?
Yes.
Supervisor Zenger?
Yes.
Supervisor Sotelo?
Yes.
Supervisor Curl?
Yes.
Supervisor Velazquez?
Yes.
Five zero vote, motion passes.
Thank you very much. That would take us to our next item, which is our closed session, our one closed session item, conference with labor negotiator. Or is there any public comment on that?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
Thank you very much. Be back in 30 to 40, 30 minutes or so.
30 minutes.
All right, welcome back from closed sessions 12:11. County Council, do we have anything to report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Board of Supervisors. The Board of Supervisors, having met in closed session as to item 2A, conference with labor negotiators, the board gave direction to its labor negotiators and there is no other reportable action. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We're adjourned.